At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation, resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. The next item on our agenda is public comment. We have one public comment from Justin Crowe, which I will read to the committee. Dear school committee, as one of the town coordinators of the Williamstown Soccer Club, I write on behalf of more than 100 district families who are eager to receive district permission to use field space at Wes and Mount Greylock for our soccer program this fall. Unlike Mount Greylock, which offers structured, organized athletic opportunities for middle and high school students, Wes has no such program. For many years then, Williamstown Soccer Club, operating as part of the Berkshire County Youth Soccer League, has filled that gap for boys and girls in 3rd through 8th grade. We are open to all in the community. We do not use tryouts or make cuts, and we offer fee waivers for those families who lack the means to pay registration costs. All of our coaches are volunteer parents. They are Cory-checked, Safe Sport certified, and trained in concussion awareness. As a program, we emphasize skill-building, teamwork within grade-based cohorts, and love of the game over winning. Though at the risk of bragging, our teams have been quite successful in county competition in recent years. We have spent much of the summer figuring out ways to continue to serve the community, accounting for the requirements set forth by EEA and mass youth soccer, and communicating with the town manager, who in turn reviewed plans with the town health inspector. We believe that we have a valuable service to provide to the community in this difficult time, and we believe that we can provide it safely, even in this difficult time. All we ask from the district is the opportunity to use school fields to provide it. After all, as Ms. Von Hold's recently expressed, it is going to be especially important this fall, given the realities of what school will look like, for our children to have opportunities to be outside, to get exercise, to run around with friends in a fun but supervised manner. We ask that you please allow us to facilitate that for the 100-plus district families that are enthusiastic about, and in many cases, desperate for the return of our program this fall. Justin Crowe, Williamstown. Okay. The next item on our agenda are the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the July 9th, 2020 minutes?
So moved.
Green moves. Do I have a second?
Millis second.
Miller seconds. I did see one error, but I can submit that. It's just the last name that got changed. Any further discussion? All in favor? We'll have to roll call vote alphabetically since we have two members on the phone.
Carter, aye.
Carter, aye.
Conry, aye.
Blago, aye.
Green, aye.
Miller, aye.
Turnover, aye.
Thank you. That motion passes. Do I have a motion to approve the August 19th, 2020 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Green moves. Miller seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Carter, aye.
Carter, aye.
Conry, aye.
Blago, aye.
Green, aye.
Miller, aye.
Turnover, aye.
Okay, that motion passes. August, do I have a motion to approve the August 26th, 2020 minutes?
So moved.
So second.
Green moves. Miller seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Carter, aye.
Carter, aye.
Conry, aye.
Blago, aye.
Green, aye.
Miller, aye.
Turnover, aye.
Thank you. That motion passes. Do I have a motion to approve the August 27th, 2020 minutes?
So moved.
Green moves.
Second.
Miller seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Carter, aye.
Carter, aye.
Conry, aye.
Blago, aye.
Green, aye.
Miller, aye.
Turnover, aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Do I have a motion to accept the September 1st, 2020 minutes?
So moved.
Green moves. Do I have a second?
Millis second.
Miller seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Carter, aye.
Carter, aye.
Conry, aye.
Blago, aye.
Green, aye.
Miller, aye.
Turnover, aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you very much. Then, next up on our agenda are the principal updates, and we have Lanesboro Elementary School first?
Actually, we changed our order.
Oh, okay. So we have Jake. Is Jake first, then?
Yes, he is.
Hi, Jake.
All right, Jake.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Hi, it's Jake, live from my living room. I hope you're all well. So we've been, we've been very busy, the staff at Mount Greylock. It's been very impressive the past week. And so we've been engulfed with PD. We start every morning with a check-in together, just syncing up and making sure everyone's on the same page. And then we disperse and jump right into things. We, we've been trained by our social workers and school psychologists about the proper ways to talk about COVID with our students. We've had PPE and health procedures drilled into us by our medical professionals. We've covered all typical compliance training and special ed orientation. We've had a host of technological application and resources training. So we've had smart notebook training. Those are the projectors that we have in the classroom. We've had Elmo training. That is, it's a document scanner and reader. We've had Zoom trainings and Screencastify, Canvas trainings, a lot of Canvas trainings, Power School review. We've also gone over our mental, our physical health screeners that will be a Power School plugin. We've gone over our mental health screeners, arrival and dismissal procedures. We've had emotional intelligence training. We've, our middle school teachers have gone through a workshop for a couple days called Teaching Through Emotion. Our staff is starting Rebus and Associates training. So we've, we've been busy. The staff at Mount Greylock has been really busy. And I'm very impressed with them. And so I believe Joe or Dr. Putnam is going to throw the schedule up on the, on the screen. And I'm just going to talk to that for a second. So this is our sample student schedule. I believe you're looking at the rainbow one.
Yeah.
So what's, what's important to note here is it's a nine-period day that starts at 7:40 and ends at 2:20. The classes are 45-minute blocks, and they do not rotate. So the blocks are what students and parents and staff are accustomed to at Mount Greylock, having blocks that typically rotate and move. And not every student might have every block. And so the way we've arranged it now is we're still using the block system, but we've solidified it so it doesn't move and it fits into a certain time period. You notice we still have directed study that is, combines with lunch. And so that, that is beneficial for a couple reasons. Students that are at home, it allows for a longer, a longer gap in between because we all know trying to work from home or learn from home, you often need, need that space in between because things come up when you're at home. And the color coordination here is really, it's a guide for, for teachers as far as a method in which we may combine the synchronous and asynchronous aspects of instruction and learning. So this is, it's a template to show how teachers traditionally run a classroom. Not every, every period most, you know, it's not college where you might just get straight lecture. Often, there might be one, one day within a lesson that's, that's mainly lecture. And then there's going to be turn and talks. There's going to be group work and reteaching. And there's, so it's not, it's not like the teacher's just standing up the front of the classroom. So this attempts to capture it and to put it in a sort of, sort of schedule in which every student throughout, dip throughout the day will get a, an even amount of, or a balanced amount of synchronous versus asynchronous work. So this is the schedule that our students that are remote will use, our students that are hybrid will use. And if we are, if we, when we come back to all in person, this is, it would be easy to transition to straight in person. You'll see we have our traditional test days labeled as well. So this is the, this is a sample of the student's schedule. So where it says English Block 1, that doesn't necessarily, that does not mean all English is Block 1. This is just, say, you know, one student's example that happens to have English Block 1. So moving on from the schedule, let's see. We are at two announcements. We're, we're going to have the book and material distribution. Not too long ago, we were asking families to drop their books back off. Well, we have reconstituted those books, and they, we are ready to distribute them to certain, to the students that need them. So email, I believe, just went out earlier today by Colin, our assistant principal, about the pickup on Monday and Tuesday. So that's going to be Monday and Tuesday all day long, where folks can come. And it's the same curbside, curbside pickup and pick up the materials that you'll need. And that's whether you're remote or hybrid. So that's, this material's for everybody. And so that's, that's all I have for my update today. Thank you.
Can I ask one question? I don't know if you can hear me, but I'm just curious if the sample schedule will be online for parents and students to take a look at.
Online, the sample schedule's not online, but if you go to the web, the Greylock website and you go to community, there's just the block schedules on there that shows the times and the rotations. So it's under, I'm sorry, it's at the Greylock website, under Mount Greylock Resources tab, bell schedules. The first one up there is temporary COVID time schedule.
Great. Thank you.
I believe that's what you're asking. I can't quite hear you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At what point do the students find out if they're in the A group or the B group?
So we just finalized that today. And we are scrubbing the list to make sure there's no classes with too few students and there's no classes with too many students. And we're scrubbing it to make sure as many requests that we can accommodate are accommodated. And we are going to, the first step is going to be in an email that we send out likely tomorrow afternoon or in the weekend to students, letting them know what cohort they're in. But we're also working with our tech department to figure out how we can annotate that in a useful way on Power School. So my best answer is soon, and it's coming.
Great. Thank you. I don't see any more questions. So back to Lanesboro Elementary School.
Hello. So, update. So since the last time we did a principal's update, we made three new hires. We hired Andrea Roder as our new 5th grade math teacher, Alan Livermore, who is our new music teacher, and Connor Hadley, who's working in the Life Skills Department. We also have created class lists and distributed them to teachers. So the teachers will then distribute to families or, you know, contact families like, hey, you're going to be in my class this year. We've also distributed schedules to teachers. And the teachers will communicate that to the families as well. We're gearing up for remote. All of last week, teachers focused on professional development and technology such as Google Classroom, Zoom, Google Forms, amongst other things like iExcel and other software that students use throughout the day. And in the afternoon, they worked on compliance training, gearing up on all the new policies and procedures for the school year. We've also spent some time talking about, talking with students about COVID-19, what it's like, how it's affecting their life. We've also talked with teachers about how it's affecting our, you know, their lives. The teachers are trying to be the support that we can be. I had to really applaud the teachers for, I don't, it's a short notice and we like, so they had their class list in their hands till Wednesday, Tuesday, maybe Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday, based on the surveys that came in on Friday afternoon. Try to get them out as quickly as possible based on what we got in. And they've been, you know, taking it in the best stride that they could to be prepared for the school year. And so with that information, they started to build their class kit, student kits. So each student will have a little Rubbermaid box filled with a bunch of goodies that are grade-level appropriate, like manipulatives, rulers, et cetera. They, they can take home if they're going to be remote for a couple, you know, when they're remote, they'll have it. Then when they come in, they still, we don't want them sharing a lot of stuff and the time it would take to disinfect all the rulers in the classroom. They'll have it in a box next to their desk. They close it up. There's their own stuff that they, it's only their hands that go on it. Every morning, we have a coffee and chit-chat to get the day going with the teachers and staff. Let them know what's changed, what's new, what to expect in the couple days ahead of us. And I actually stole this idea from Jake. I believe Jake was doing coffee and chit-chat with parents a couple Saturdays ago. And I was like, that is a great idea. So last Saturday, I had my first coffee and chit-chat with the Lanesboro families. It was, there was a lot of questions that led me, you know, questions at this point are guidance. Like, hey, what are we going to do with this? Sometimes I say, I don't know. But it helps me guide, like, hey, this is something I didn't think about. Let's work on that. So, so before we get to my schedule, one big thing that I've been working on all summer is the Lanesboro Elementary Student Support Center. And what that is, is students will have a place to work remotely when we are remote in the building. It is the gym and the cafeteria will be utilized. Students will have paraprofessionals as learning coaches throughout the day, so they have someone to keep them on task. They will have lunch and recess just like anyone else would. And when a teacher has a screen break, we also have like a mini perimeter track that students can walk on, not run, with their mask on, just to, you know, get away from the screen and to move a little bit. So they'll, it's a great place for the students to come that don't have, for the families that don't have the childcare as needed. The only issue is it's only about 65 spaces, which isn't a lot. But we have about 189 enrolled, so we can't fit them all. So it will be need-based. And we're still working on transportation. Like, if we're going to do transportation for everyone, it's probably going to be special education students that have transportation. So that is that. I have the schedule here. So this is the schedule that Rob picked. You picked the half-day schedule, which I can talk about. So I can talk about the remote schedule first because I think that's maybe more important with the fact that that starts on Wednesday. The remote schedule is a regular school day. It's a regular school day done virtually. They will, they will have their morning meeting with their class. They'll like, then they'll probably go into reading groups with the paraprofessional teacher. They'll have breaks because I think it's impossible to have a kid sit for six and a half hours in front of a computer. They'll have lunch and recess. They'll have time to get outside. Not super, you know, it's not to be supervised by a teacher, but they'll have breaks away from the computers to eat. And they'll reconvene. They'll have their specialist. They will meet with their specialist. So it'll be like a regular school day, which is fantastic because if we go back to five days a week, eventually, it'll be something so easy to transition into. And again, in the remote, all IEP services and all 504 services will be granted. Some are in person, but I think Pat's going to speak to that a little bit potentially. I don't want to put him on the bus. So that is the remote schedule. This is the half-day schedule, which is still being worked on. Thank you, Rob. So the idea of the half-day schedule is that students will be, when they're in school in the hybrid model with their A group or their B group, whatever section's in school, they will be with their general education teacher focusing on core content. They will have a break. They will have a snack. They will have a 15-minute recess because kids need to play. And then they'll get on the bus and they'll go home. They'll eat lunch, and they'll start attending school virtually, which they've been already doing for two weeks. So they should be pros at it at this point. The remote service will be, or the virtual education will be specialist. There will be, also be time to work with a paraprofessional to complete work from earlier that day. Special education students that, I might talk about this as well, so I don't want to overlap, but some students will be staying for the second half of the day, go to the Lanesboro Elementary Student Support Center, and then go see their special education teacher for their IEP services, et cetera. So I just threw a lot at you. I wouldn't even look at this schedule because Rob put it up. But this would be, in the morning, oh, I can zoom in. In the morning, the student would come in. They'd have all their core content, ELA, math, snack, recess, and then, so that's, this is what a teacher's schedule would look like. They just do it, the same thing in the morning as it is in the afternoon. So then on Monday.
Can you go up just for a second?
Yes.
So it's 10:10 to 10:40.
There might be a typo in there.
And then 10:40 to 11:10. I'm just seeing, so it's two straight math blocks? I mean, there's a math block. I love this.
I mean, so it's really a rough draft.
Okay.
But like, so it could be ELA, math, and then science and social studies. I think they'll probably focus more on reading and math and writing than science and social studies because those can't do science and social studies without the math and the English. So, again, this is a rough draft. And so in the afternoon, they will have their specialist. This is what it would look like. So says, so say this group here is kindergarteners in the morning, but they come to the afternoon. They'd have an afternoon meeting. I think it's important that, since it's such a big transition from being in school to at home, we'd have all the students come back together and do a morning meeting. But it's in the afternoon, so an afternoon meeting. And then the kindergarteners would run off, and they would be in, I think it's art. And then they go, so kindergarteners would be in art. Then they would have, sometimes their academic support teacher, or the paraprofessional, focusing on things they've learned, maybe reading a book together. And then they'd have a break. They'd do more work with the paraprofessional, reading, math practice. And then the day would be over. So that's what the half-day would look like. So I just spit a bunch of information at you. If you have questions, please ask.
Let me?
Wondering where, what the thinking is in terms of support for families, either around the use of the technology platforms or content so that they can better support their kids learning at home?
So I am, thought as to create tutorials for parents of how to get them onto the Chromebook. I haven't made them yet, but they will be made probably sometime this weekend, hopefully. It just, it's something that simulates just how to open it up and turn it on. Just a visual, like this is the Chromebook. This is what it turns, this is how to turn on. And then giving them a number to reach if they forget their student's username and password. I don't want to say how to log on to people's specific Chromebook that way. And then showing them, you know, once you're on the Chrome, once you're on the Chromebook, where to go for Google Classroom, where to go for the specific apps, Zoom. So we're going to create a tutorial for that as well. So, and then I think Joe Bergeron is in charge of internet hotspots for the district. And all, we just did our final call for Chromebooks. We have about 14 left that haven't been picked up yet. So we did a real book call today. And hopefully, they get picked up tomorrow between 1:00 and 3:00.
Christine?
So first off, I just want to say, you know, many thanks for creating a space where we'll be able to handle so many children, you know, throughout the day. I think this is outstanding news to hear. The other question I had is for the AMPM model. Is there any thought of occasionally switching up so that maybe sometimes you see the specialist in person and do maybe one day of math remote just so that you can meet people? Or is that?
I like that idea. It's a good idea. However, I think the core content is the driving force of the school, the ELA, the math. It's really, I think we're going to see a lot of regression since March. I think we'll be playing catch-up for the next couple of years. So, I mean, I think that might be important.
No, I was thinking of just one or two classes, and hopefully, we will go to full day. This won't matter. But just so that you actually have a chance to meet the teacher.
So that might be something we need to consider down the road when the AMPM model maybe becomes old. Like, if you know, we're stuck in it, so.
Right.
Not something I've considered yet.
Exactly.
Other questions? All right. Fantastic.
Thank you. Okay, now we have the Williamstown Elementary School.
Christine and I do have one question.
Yes. Oh, sorry.
It's a similar, it's the one that was put to Jake. Does, no one have an idea when the parents are going to find out whether their kids are in AM or PM? A lot of parents are asking that question.
Sometime next week. I have it like half day model doesn't start for a couple of weeks. So it wasn't put on the, you know, the high priority list. It is on the A priority list, just not the highest priority list. So hopefully, we're hoping sometime early to late next week, which is the entire week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So since we met last, we have actually been, had some hustle and bustle around the school since teachers return, have returned. And it's been really refreshing to hear and see everyone moving around at school, especially being brand new and getting to put names, you know, half faces and, you know, hear voices and see some interaction. Currently, we have new, three new paraprofessionals at West, Joy Washburn, Megan Holland, and Abby Lozinski. Abby may sound familiar because she was actually a student teacher at West last year. Teachers have been working feverishly to get the beginning of the year logistics in place. They've been attending tons of tech trainings such as CSO, Google Classroom, Google Sites, Zoom, Discovery Education, and Everyday Math. I myself have witnessed some social distance meetings taking place around the campus and the dedication and collaboration between teachers. Even though it may look different right now, it's very apparent. The administration team has been working on teacher assignments, schedules, and other important moving places, moving pieces in place. We'll be notifying families of class and cohort placements tomorrow. We will also be communicating about materials distribution for parents. Information will be sent out tomorrow and the distribution will take place on Monday. Most parents have picked up their Chromebooks and if they haven't, they should be in touch with us. Our high needs students are starting in person on Thursday. Our special education staff have been collaborating to deliver services and are being very creative in how to use best practices to deliver those services. Ultimately, an overall feeling is that we are looking forward to seeing our students and continuing to get to do what we're all passionate about. And that's education and educating instruction. So our West twenty twenty one schedule, ooh, pull this back just a little bit. This is our, sorry. This is our remote.
Should I choose the right?
This is the remote. This is the remote. Sorry, we've looked at so many schedules lately. We have to like, I have to process which one we're looking at. So this is our remote schedule at this time. As you can see, over separated, we have a column of definitions. So any of the terms that we use in those boxes, we have a clear definition of what may be going on during those blocks. Right now, it's, it's grade level. So you have Kinder through first or Kinder through sixth in each block. Right now, the darker red, you'll see E L A in tiers. So tier one, tier two, and tier three. We have synchronous learning and asynchronous learning going on split. And the tier two learning is scheduled. And we did that so that all of our students had access to that intervention time. And we also have, as we're doing our tiers, we have, we're sticking to that I do, you do, you do model within our blocks of time. We also have our, we have lunch and mask breaks scheduled in. I don't know if you can see all that.
Can you zoom in a little bit?
Sure.
Thanks.
That's a little bit. We kind of cut off at eleven thirty-five there. But we also have, we do have science and social studies scheduled in there. Generally, that's happening after our E L A and math time so that those extensions can be applied and those skills can be applied during those times. We do have synchronous specials as well as asynchronous specials going on. And I think I, did I miss any blocks? I don't think I missed any blocks. And again, the definitions are right there on the left. If you have any questions about what exactly the terminology is on those.
Great. Any questions? Regina, Ally? I think we're all set. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Next up on our agenda is the Acting Director of People's Services update.
Hello, I'm Patrick Prester, Acting Director of People's Services, here to give the update on the summer program that we ran this past summer. Again, presentation. All right, there we go. So I'm very happy with it. We were able to run a summer program this, this past summer. There was a lot that went into it. When Desi started putting out the guidance for summer back in the spring, we were told all this, you know, different parameters. We had to bring the students back in and at first it seemed a bit overwhelming. But we were able to work through it and set up a program, I think, that really benefited quite a few kids. And the, one of the most difficult parts is we didn't get the final go ahead till June twenty-fifth. And we started our program, I believe, on July seventh. And I'd like to give a very special thank you to Kristin Jingeras and the staff that came in. They're very brave souls. They were the first group of people that came into the building and supervised students and provided education to our students. So I'm very proud of them and I was lucky to have them working for us. And Kristin Jingeras was kindly able to put this together. She was going to come and maybe present, but she had an appointment tonight. So she, she actually put this slideshow together for us. So I'd like to thank her and give her credit for that. So the Summer Program twenty twenty, otherwise known as Extended Year Services or Extended Year Programs in Special Education. We ran a tutoring program remote in Williamstown. We weren't able to run a in-person program because we didn't have enough people sign up. I believe we only had two students, so we offered them remote programming. In Lanesboro, we also had a remote tutoring program. And what I mean by tutoring programs, more related to academic skills, E L A and math. Multi-grade program is for the younger kids, the pre K K kids. And it's just helped them maintain the social skills and be ready to go in the fall. So we were able to run a multi-grade program in Lanesboro that consisted of the pre K and K kids. That was in person. And I would like to say to the students and staff there that I was very proud of them. Every time I stopped down there to say hi, they all had their mask on and they maintained social distance. And they were still able to do some pretty cool and fun activities in that situation. And then I want to remember one of the days I went down there and they were watching a video and they were dancing around in a little hula hoop circle and just maintained the distance. So it was pretty cool to see and it kind of opened your eyes to what can be done with those young kids. Mount Greylock, we were able to run and we, we brought up our elementary life school kids for in-person and our middle and high school in one building so we could just have our related services staff come in and service them at one spot. It just made programming a lot easier. And we also ran a remote tutoring program. So total enrollment of the programs was fifty-nine students, twenty-seven at West, twenty-six at Les, and six students at Mount Greylock. So. So programs at Les, the activities included six students attended the program. We hosted a four-week summer program for qualifying students for the purpose of preventing significant regression of skills throughout the extended summer vacation. And this was a really extended summer vacation, it seemed like, because they went out in March. So the, the kids really needed it. Throughout the course of this program, students worked to maintain academic, behavioral, and social skills. First thing we did is we started off teaching them about the new health and safety protocols and how to maintain distance, you know, wash your hands, go to the bathroom, all that stuff we had to work through and design. We also had a variety of exciting art and STEM activities, which corresponded with our new weekly themes, were incorporated to maximize student engagement. And these activities included planting seeds, decorating birdhouses, making bird feeders, color mixing, and farm animal projects. And as you can see, a couple of examples of the students working there. And as you can see, the classroom has it was set up for the summer, maintaining social distance. And again, I was very proud of them. They were able to maintain that the whole time. There's a couple of them doing their activities. So the challenge was trying to, you know, organize social activities during the period of social distancing. But as you can see, the staff was able to do it and still maintaining health and safety for all. So programs at Mount Greylock included elementary and middle, high school life skills programs. We had a total of six students that chose to come in for the program. This summer, MG hosted a five-week summer program for qualifying K through twelve students for the purpose of preventing significant regression of skills throughout the extended summer vacation. Students who attend this program work hard to maintain their academic, behavioral, and social skills and engage in a variety of life skills building activities. And our staff and students did a phenomenal job adjusting to in-person learning while maintaining Desi's COVID-nineteen regulations. Just to add to that, the first day of the program, we actually had the students, we didn't bring them in on July sixth. We brought our staff in and we had our nursing staff train them on the health and safety protocols related to COVID-nineteen and social distancing measures. So. And here's a picture of the students performing a few activities. As you can see, someone had a really good time. So in our remote tutoring program, so that's where we focus on the academic skills for kids who are identified to maybe have regressed during the, the closure period in the spring. In addition to the five-week multi-grade programs, West Les and Mount Greylock each hosted a four-week remote tutoring program for students requiring support in academics and related services. Students attending this program worked hard toward maintaining their academic fine motor, gross motor, and speech and language skills throughout the summer months. So we were able to provide all those services to these students. And it was something I was proud of. I think, you know, the staff was proud of because, you know, these kids went for a long time without some of, some of that stuff. So we were able to provide it and make a productive summer for them. And we'd like to give many thanks to our amazing staff that made the summer program a success for all students. And again, I'd like to just, you know, they were brave souls to come in here and trust that we'll provide a safe environment for them to work in. And I think, you know, after the first day, some of the worries went away and they were able to see that we were able to provide a safe program and it was meaningful to the students. So. And that's really it on the summer program. Any questions regarding the summer?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for me while I'm up here or related to?
I was just going to wonder, wonderful to hear about this. Can you talk a little bit about how effective you thought this was?
Um, I thought it was very effective, especially for our younger kids and the, and the life skills kids because they, they need that interaction. They, they learn by watching. They learn by watching us interacting with each other. They learn from each other. And that time away, I think, really may have cost them to some degree because they didn't get that socialization. And it's really what, what these summer programs are about for that group of students. And just to maintain, you know, the norms of coming to school and the behavioral expectations that they, they need to maintain during the school year. So I really think it was beneficial to them. I mean, you might not see it necessarily written up on the data because we do track progress, but we don't necessarily write goals like we do during the year. It's a little more laid back, but we just focus on the skills we think they need to be successful in the fall. And that's really what it's about. We'll see how it goes when they enter that on the first day this week, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Cody, do you think?
Okay, next up on our agenda is the Athletic Director Report and Participation Fees for Fall Sports.
Excuse me. So for Athletic Director Report, excuse me, Lindsay's been working nonstop. And I told her that this particular thing has to do with just participation fees for, for fall sports. And rather than her spending all of her time here, I suggested that she actually go spend some time with her family and that I would go over this participation fees for sports with you. So at the heart of this whole thing is there is, Lindsay's come up with a proposal.
Of course, proposal sitting there on the floor.
We're all proposals today. So Lindsay's come up with a proposal in regard to fees. The basis of this idea is the fact that we're not having the same kind of program that we've had in previous years, and so the fees should be amended in some fashion. So the way she was thinking about this, and I'll share this with you, her, her general thinking, is that we should alter the fees as either a fixed amount or a percentage of the stipends that we're going to be paying. Those are two choices. And we, we could go over this, but I think she gave examples. For example, cross-country, which has thirty-five practices, eight, nine weeks, six races. Typically, it's a hundred and twenty at the high school and ninety-five at the middle school. She said if you were going to use just a fixed number, that should probably be altered to ninety to ninety-five dollars for the high school and seventy to seventy-five for middle school or a percentage of the stipend. And that's for later consideration, but I'm just giving you an idea of how she's thinking about this. For golf, thirty-five practices, six to seven weeks, the same fee structure. Previously, a hundred and twenty at the high school, ninety-five at the middle. And she suggests, suggested a recommended fee could be ninety to ninety-five or seventy to seventy-five. Now, we also have unified basketball, which is six practices. And she wanted to consider that this is going to be very different. So let, that there was nothing, no previous fees for these. But she has suggested somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five to thirty dollars for unified basketball, football, fifty dollars for volleyball and soccer. And then cross-country running and golf. She's thought that there's, there's a way of thinking about this in regard to if we have a recommended fee or if we were to think about it in terms of a stipend. If the stipend is eighty, is, the stipend we're paying is going to be eighty percent of what has previously been paid. That's how she came upon these numbers of a hundred and twenty for high school and instead of ninety-five, if we were to apply the eighty percent. So I think that this is the overview of her proposal, but I don't think this is something to vote on right now because we have other conversations we have to have in this regard. But I wanted to give you her idea and to give you an opportunity to speak with her. She's available by cell right now if anyone would like to ask questions that I'm clearly not qualified to get or answer.
Any questions? Steve?
I guess the only question I had is, given how sports are going to be restructured, are there going to be significantly reduced expenses for each sport in terms of not as much travel, maybe not officials?
I think that's, that's definitely the case, that, that busing is going to be entirely different. This, this is going to be a very different approach.
So the fee structure is going to be adjusted to just match the expenses we have for this year, not what we're normally doing.
And I, you know, I'm, I'm unbelie, more than confident in Lindsay's assessment of the situation and I take any of her recommendations. But that's about that for, yes?
I'll do my annual thing that I disagree with athletic fees, I disagree with activity fees. I think in essence, that's a tax that we've put on parents and families and students to do what we want them to do, which is stay involved in the school. I think it's unfair. I think that if we have a, have a program, I don't, I don't care if it's a, if a art, music, physical education, I think that's, that's something that should be picked up by the school. I know I'm, I'm spitting into the wind on, on this, but I think having any type of activity fee, I think, is wrong. I think that that's something that we should, we should do as a school system and not tax students and children and stock-type students and families for doing what we want them to do.
Yes, sir.
Steve?
We do have funds available to help anybody who has any financial need.
Yes, that is true.
Yes, so that it's, it's not going to be an obstacle to anybody being able to participate.
Yes, I believe that is definitely the case.
Okay, I don't hear any other questions.
Then it's time to segue into the next, the Superintendent's Report. So the first thing I want to bring up is Black Matter, Black Lives Matter signs to be displayed on school property. It is the consensus of the administrative team that we, we would like to be able to display signs of this sort. And the question that probably comes up from the school committee is what, how, how can school districts, how should they consider this in terms of legal perspective? I sent around the Long and DePetro, DePetro opinion on this. And what this was is this was circulated by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. And Michael Long is the lawyer for this group, as is Long and DePetro. And the question, this was back in June of seventh of twenty twenty, school districts endorsements of principles of Black Lives Matters movement. And I will direct you, it should be in your packets. I'll direct you actually to the second paragraph that follows the beginning of this letter, Dear Tom. And it says, "While the narrow question presents a complex area of law, not readily distilled by brief analysis into a simple answer, I am of the opinion," and that is Michael Long, "that school districts may publicly articulate support for the principles of the Black Lives Movement, Matters Movement." And I, so as I go through this, it's our, it is the administration's belief that it, it would be educational, something that would be very, send many messages on many levels to our community and to our students if we were to display Black Lives Matters on school property. And the final page of Michael Long's thing is that basically he says that government speech cases look to the degree of control asserted by the government. And it essentially says that we should be careful about how we do this, but that it is, it's, it's within our purview to be able to display messages of the sort that support the principles of the Black Lives Matter movement. And what I would like, I just wanted to get the school committee to take a position on this because the administration is united in its position on this.
Christina?
Yes.
So a question, when you're saying that you want to display these on school property, are you talking just about the high school, middle school to release the other two properties?
I would think all three properties. And this is not a vote in here, this is really, I'm just, I'm just, I'd like the, the school committee's position on this.
So would we need to run that by the towns to do it on the town property we lease? Or do we just have the authority to do that?
I, I believe that basically while the towns technically own the schools, I don't know if they own this school.
No, I'm going to read the lease right now.
Thank you very much. Well, why don't you come on up here? Come read it from here.
Oh, no, I did pull up.
Oh. Oh, I thought you had it over. I always anticipate that he's got everything at his fingertips.
He does, but he has a lot of fingertips.
My general position is, is that, that, that we display a number of public service announcements in our schools. And the nature of this particular, the principles behind Black Lives Matter are such that all people in the United States, that it's an educational function, that it's important that clearly our country has been trying to live up to the ideals enshrined in the Constitution and enshrined in our better selves. And as we all, as we do on a daily basis with students, we are continually reminding them of what is the appropriate behavior to exercise as a member of civic society. And I think that in this particular case, we need to emphasize the civic responsibilities of students, staff, and communities happen to see this as well because our civil society is predicated on a shared understanding of principles.
I think Steve was.
I was trying to give you some time there, Joe.
Doing my best.
Go ahead.
So I was going to say, I strongly support putting something on our property that shows what we value as a community. I would support it even more strongly if the actual language came from our community. So rather than putting Black Lives Matters, we talk amongst ourselves, what would we like to display? What words would we like, what message would we like? I think that would be a wonderful exercise in civics. And it would also, I think, sidestep some of the legal issues that were mentioned in the letter because now this would be something coming internally, inspired by this, with the words chosen by our community and district.
Am I to take this to say, for example, we could have, in a sense, I'm trying to see what this would actually physically look like. Would this look like we could have something, what does Black Lives Matter mean? Because I, I, I appreciate the idea that a simple acronym does not adequately explain, but if we were to have a round sign of that sort, what does that mean? And have the opportunity for students to, to describe what that is. And I, I agree with you also. I think the, the real, the real civic challenge is not to adhere to acronyms, but to live up to the principles that those acronyms stand for. And I think that that would be a, I think that that would, I, I, I take that as a, as a great idea that this is something that would be an interesting way to, to frame this. Because if we were to have, for example, a sign or a bulletin board with Black Lives, like a Black Lives Matter, and then what does that mean around that?
Or what does that mean to us?
What does that?
Because when you, when you have national organizations and national slogans, it's going to mean different things to different people. And the question is, when you put up something like that, are you endorsing all of the? And the question is, when you put up something like that, are you endorsing all of the views of that organization, or are you endorsing 95%? And you now start to, well, I'm not comfortable because they don't have one position that I like, but I agree with everything else. And so I strongly support the efforts to, as you said, to realize the promise. And I would just think that this is an opportunity to go even further, to have the discussions in our classrooms as to what do we want, what do we want us to be displaying.
I appreciate that.
Jamie?
Do you want to ask, you want the lease information?
No, it's not about the lease, but Joe's. The short answer is that I'll need to refer it to council because there is some language here that might mean that we need written approval, but it might not, and I'm not wholly sure.
The non-answer answer, Jamie?
I'm totally comfortable with posting of a Black Lives Matter signs on each school building. I think it's a good way to demonstrate our commitment to inclusion and principles of equity and my, too, a little bit to make sure people, all people feel welcome and respected in the school. And I think that aligns with, you know, our mission as a school district. So I'm not at all troubled by it. I think it's a good, it's a very small step. I'm really interested in kind of what more we do beyond just putting up a sign to take a look at what we're doing in the classrooms and what we're doing in the school to make sure that our curriculum is where it should be in terms of teaching and accurate representation of our history and including lots of different perspectives and voices in social studies and arts and music and English language arts. So I don't want us to just kind of put up a sign and think we've done enough. And I know we talked at the budget discussion last spring about what work we were doing on curricular rewrite. So I just applaud those efforts to really push the curriculum to do what it should do to, you know, kind of, as this letter says, pass on to students an accurate rendition of our history and really do a deep dive in engagement on the civic responsibilities.
Thank you. I love letting Jamie speak before I do because he often says some of the things I wanted to say, but so much more eloquently. I completely support the Black Lives Matter signs being displayed, and I think it's a nice first step. I've talked a lot about having a strong policy about anti-racism, and I love that we've started working on getting the true history into our curriculum. And so I guess, you know, I'm a big supporter of the placement of the signs as a first step.
You going around the horn?
Sure.
I support it also. I support it. I don't know what else I wanted to say.
So I don't disagree with anything that's been said. So my hesitation is because I think there is a discrepancy right now, and I think that there are families of color who don't feel that they have the safety in our school system that they want. And when all the Black Lives Matter signs started going up around town, and I live in Williamstown, so I can't speak to Lanesboro, but I know some of the comments were that they were seen as beacons of safety, beacons of safety, right? That if someone felt unsafe, they could go to a home where there was a Black Lives Matter sign and feel that they would be welcome, right? And do we believe that as a school system, that we can provide that kind of safety? And that's the question that I would ask, or ask us to ask ourselves before putting out a sign on our school property.
I appreciate all these ideas. It's in fact, I think that the administrative team is looking at it in much the same way, as an initial step, as the basis for conversations with students and families, as the basis for activities that we can pursue. I think it was, someone mentioned the idea, actually, having grown up as I did, in the time I did, I have been my entire life unaware of the racism that I, that many of my actions unintentionally do, I commit. And I think that part of this is, and one of the goals of the administrative team, is to put something up to say, this is going to help us to remind us, particularly given the fact that the entire Berkshire County is so overwhelmingly non-minority. And I think that it is incumbent upon us, for that very reason, to become a bastion of safety for students, students of color, for basically all students, which is part of the mission of the district at the beginning of every meeting. And I think that this is what I believe everyone considered, this is our first step. And then we start building on the very things. And I think Steve's idea of having students elaborate on what this means is an opportunity to be able to do this. What we're looking for is, we need a first step. We need a catalyst, something that enables us to start focusing a conversation. Because in a school building, many times there's so many competing folk I that this actually gives us something to say, oh, no, we got to go back to this. This is something to be reminded of. But, okay, I think, I don't think we got there, we didn't have a vote scheduled for this, I was just.
Joe? Joe?
One quick addition, I think it's important to note that the administration, the superintendent, the business administrator, the principals, the assistant principals, the acting director of people personnel services, we were unanimous in wanting to support this. And so I think that that's an important part of trying to be that beacon that Kerry talked about. And so it's important to note that that was a unanimous move by the administration.
Right. Okay, I will move on, just wanted to let you know, and I think our next thing is, if there's a, we're going to start, and we'll come back in a later meeting to describe some of the things that we're going to do to make it more than just hanging a sign and to make that sign become the catalyst for educational and civic education, basically for civic educational opportunities within the county, within the district. So the next topic I have to talk to is the Williamstown Soccer Club. As I sent around everybody, I sent you all a letter I had received, actually, you had received. You all received along with the Williamstown Select Board, a letter basically asking for me to reconsider a decision I had made, basically closing the facilities to any and all people. And I met with Mr. Harrison and Mr., fellow who just, Crowe? Yes, Mr. Crowe. I met with him this Tuesday, and we'd actually spoken on the phone prior to that. And we met, I met them with Lindsay, basically Lindsay was also there, and we discussed some of the things. And I didn't know what your position was as a school committee on the use of the field because I had just denied it. Because basically, I denied everything. I didn't want anybody on the property, I didn't want anybody in the buildings, I didn't want anybody anywhere near anything because of COVID-19. But I think that moving forward, I'm of a mind that we can come to an agreement about the use of some of the, basically use of some of our fields by the Williamstown Soccer Club. And my belief is that we can come to some understandings that are predicated, and we began these discussions, but that are predicated on the guidance that Lindsay is giving all of our sports activities. We could make things available, provided they are not being used for tents, because at this point, we're still trying to figure out where we're going to put tents up, the first of which are coming tomorrow. So, but we're going to be putting tents up around. And after speaking with these two gentlemen, I realized that there doesn't appear to be any other fields that Williamstown students can use. And I'm just of a mind that I'm going to change my opinion on this and work out an arrangement with them, and I just wanted to let you know that. I think that it's not going to be like it was. In other words, that typically they were using fields, they were using many of the fields, and here at Mount Greylock, and I'm going to most likely have to relegate this to the front field that's right on Route 7, as I was looking this over, because of all the activities that are being planned for the students here. I'm also going to bring up some, I'm going to want them to organize this in a fashion that is consistent with the precautions that we are taking and are required by MIAA in terms of cohorting, because one of the issues that we face is that we have established, the principals have established cohorts that enable us to really determine who's been in contact with who in the event of an infection. So I'm going to be asking the Williamstown Soccer Club also to consider, to work with us to figure out how do we maintain cohorts so that in the event of an infection, we can actually track what's happened rather than being, rather than being in the dark and having no idea about how this is, the extent to which this is happening. So anyhow, I just wanted to let you know that I had reconsidered my refusal to let them participate, and I'm going to work with them to come up with a.
I think that we have to think about field or the school as a school project, but it's also a community resource. And by being a community resource, that means members from the community can use the fields or use the facility at times that obviously, you know. So I think, I'm hoping, I'm sure you will, work out a deal, I don't know, Mr. Crowe, I just, from the letters, I think if we can find a reasonable way, a safe way, I think that we should encourage community use. I think the more the community comes on to our facility, to school facility, I think the more cooperation and the more enthusiasm we get from the community. I think it's important that we reach out. I worked at a community school in Pitchfield for 35 years, and I think when you have a situation of a school and a community and neighborhood working together, it makes the whole situation better. That's why I think we need an artificial turf field.
Steve?
I just want to join in everything that Al said, in particular, you know, thank you for reconsidering. When you read the letter about just how many families are involved, and given the fact that we have had so many months where activities has been shut down, I remember in the very first presentations you were giving us, you were talking about COVID, but the threat of COVID is just one of many things we need to consider. There's also the social and emotional costs of this enforced isolation, the lack of activities, the lack of physical exercise. And so the ability to get our kids back on the fields, to have them exercising, to have them doing teamwork again, is outstanding. And I think anything we can do to have as much participation as possible, it was wonderful to hear that we've got boys and girls teams, grades three to eight, that we have so many people involved, and it's wonderful to hear.
Regina would like to make a comment.
Rob, I just, I really want to thank you for making sure that you're going to have them following the COVID plan and the MIAA restrictions and the cohorting. I think that's a really important piece of this while we're looking at still having remote learning and then hybrid learning, to have control over what's going on at the physical facility by other entities. I think that's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if that's that topic, I will be reaching out to Mr. Crowe, Messrs. Crowe and Harrison tomorrow. And right now, I would like to feature, feature, I would like to bring up our Director of Curriculum to talk to our survey results.
Do you have a first act or we don't need this?
Do you need one or no?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have it in your packet.
Okay.
Stacy added.
Oh, okay, so this.
It should be in your.
Okay. The next thing I have is the copy along term lease approval.
I don't know where she put it in the packet, she just said, I'm not talking about the copier.
I was so looking forward to talking about copying.
There are so many things I do, but copiers are not one.
In the meeting.
Oh, it's in 08C.
I just, so, as you know, we recently sent out what we're calling the final parent survey, family survey. As we have for all the surveys, we've gotten a really great response rate. So for the families who are listening, thank you so much for being so responsive. And we just really appreciate patience and listening. We were a bit surprised by the survey. So basically, in a nutshell, the number of families who are choosing to be remote is about half of what it was from the prior survey. So I think we can look at that as confidence in everything that we've been talking about and doing to work to ensure safety, to get students and staff back into the building. It leaves us with a different set of challenges and rethinking how we're going to present remote, perhaps. And so you, for the public who can't see this, at Lanesboro Elementary, of 181 students, 24 at this point in time are choosing to be remote only. And just as a caveat, remember, everybody's going to be remote for the first two weeks. At Williamstown Elementary, 54 of 380 students are choosing to be remote. And from Mount Greylock, seven through 12, 86 out of 538 are choosing to be remote. We also asked a question about bus ridership. This has been really important, and I believe at some point Joe may speak about this, but we have limited ridership on the buses, so we've been wondering, you know, who really needs to ride the bus, and will we need more buses, and will we need additional routes? And principals have all been working really closely with business office on that. But, so 89 people in Lanesboro, according to the survey, are saying that they are definitely going to need the bus, 70 in Williamstown and 201 at Mount Greylock. Those are significantly smaller numbers than last year, which we did expect. So in one way, we had some surprises, and another way, exactly what we expected. I don't know if people have questions, and I know Rob will also add more.
Steve?
So I know, I know in the past there was talk about the difference between those who need the bus and those who would like the bus. Are we looking at that data, or are we just asking?
We simply asked the question, will your child ride the bus?
Okay.
All right, you're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our business administrator, Bill Bergeron, whose former career was as a school committee chair, just pointed out that I'm playing somewhat fast and loose, that chair, just pointed out that I'm playing somewhat fast and loose, that I had not announced in superintendent's updates anything beyond the Williamstown Soccer Club. So the question is, is that, you know, ultra-ton, ultra-more. And what I find is, is that in other districts I've worked at, basically superintendent's update was sort of wide-ranging. I don't know what it is here. If I'm overstepping my bounds, let me know, and I shall shut my mouth. Otherwise, I was going to talk to the remote academy, today's most recent COVID-19 designation that was found on the maps, and fire drills, and the new sidewalk at less. But none of those were announced on the agenda.
You know, I feel like there used to be agenda items that said "other" items for the superintendent, so I think it's perfectly acceptable for you to bring forth other items in your.
Okay, then. I just wanted to make sure, as I said, in my other, other districts I've worked at, they recognized my sometimes impromptu approach toward organizing things. So in any case, actually, I should say, they tolerated it, and I thank you for tolerating it. So essentially, as Joelle was just saying, we came to agreements, and we have been discussing a remote academy. All of that was predicated on over 20% of students doing remote, which was the indication that Joelle just said we had had earlier in July. So we were somewhat surprised, and our plans have been upended. We are going to have to think of a new way of approaching remote academy. Because at the core of this, the remote academy was predicated on an idea that so, that the number of children who were going, families that were going to choose only remote would enable us to reduce the number of classes, thereby making available teachers who could then teach remote. Well, according to the survey, we're going to have the exact same number of classes we would have had in any case. There's no other way to do this. So we've got some really interesting, confounding issues on how to provide remote academy, and I'm going to be completely honest, we haven't figured out how to do it at this point. There's the possibility, as I said, we need every teacher on deck in classrooms to teach the courses that we've got. And we're going to need, that, we're going to have to figure out a way to do this, and it might require the hiring of additional personnel. And I think this is something that we're going to have to discuss moving forward as we try to figure out the best way to come up with a remote academy. We are still committed to it, and as you recall, the concept of blended synchronous learning was something that I had originally proposed for K through 12. And it was determined in agreement and through negotiation that we would actually go for a remote academy. This has now been made more complicated, and it's, while it's complicated in our current AMPM situation, I have to say, it's complicated but doable. It becomes undoable when we move, without significant investment in new personnel, when November 2nd comes along and our projected all-in at the K through 6 happens. We are looking at, we're going to need, if that, moving forward in that direction is going to require a significant addition of personnel in order to do this. As I said, in the current AMPM hybrid, it is doable, although difficult but doable. So the idea is that we can make this happen. But also, I've got to warn you that we had planned to be able to start the remote academy with the beginning, Jude's, with the September 16th. Basically, we were going to assign students to those, to those, basically, to the remote academy teachers. We can't pull it off right now. So we're going to have to do this differently. It looks at this point, we're going to need just to assign students to essentially remote classrooms. And we, that this would require some punting on November 2nd. Did I say that fairly? I looked for nods, thumbs up or thumbs down. Okay. So anyhow, that's where we stand there. Now, today, you may have seen, if you happen to be, do like I do, and every day and every few hours check the COVID maps, you might have noted that Williamstown had exited its low status, in other words, the gray color that we have, and Williamstown had basically skipped over green and moved directly into yellow. I reached out to Jeff Kennedy, and Jeff said, as you, if you have read I Berchers today, Jeff said that no, this is, that these data were not reflective of the actual infection rates in Williamstown. I've reached out to the mass.gov, I've sent in my request saying, please, someone please explain this to me. I've also reached out to the Department of Education. No one has written me back yet, but I will keep you all updated as I try to find this out. But essentially, at this point, I, in many ways, depend on the department, our health inspectors and the Departments of Health in the towns. And if you read that article, Jeff was disputing what was, had been reported on it. I wish I could tell you definitively, but I can't. I just wanted to bring this up so everybody was aware of it. Another thing I'd like to bring up, okay, another thing I'd like to bring up is that according to our Fire Chief and State Fire Marchals, we are going to need to conduct fire drills. We're going to need, this has to happen within, I believe it's three days of the. Now, this is going to be truly interesting challenge, because we've got to, I like the expression, dump, but I would actually prefer to that, we have to exit the building. All 300 and how many kids?
Depends on the day.
Depends on the day. We're going to have to get the kids out in three minutes. I believe that's all buildings. So I can tell you right now that we're not getting a dispensation from that, but I'm going to tell you right now, it's going to take away our ability to control social distancing. And we're going to have to conduct these for each cohort, Cohort A, Cohort B. And the Fire Department has agreed to allow us to have people hold the doors open rather than, and for us to assemble in multiple spread-out assembly areas versus the typical method. So the police also are very accommodating with our lockdown drills. Those will be done in conversations through Zoom. But I just wanted to let you know that this is, when we do exit these buildings, it's not going to be socially distanced in order to, in order to meet the benchmarks for exiting. Just wanted to let everybody know and let the listening public recognize that in order for us to conduct these in the way they have to be conducted, that's how it's going to roll. Now, Tim, Tim was going to call in.
Then I could call him the same way we handled Jake.
Oh, okay. I will step aside then.
Rob, I just want to confirm, it's three days after students return to instruction off, three days after the school year begins.
Right. Needs to happen with the first three days at all three schools when students are in the school. No, you're absolutely right there. Thank you for that.
Just making sure it doesn't language.
All right, you ready?
It's time to phone a friend. Yeah, you'll just mute your speaker back there, and then I'll put you on.
Good? All righty. You're on.
Oh, hello. It's Tim Sears, Director of Buildings and Grounds, and I just wanted to address the committee tonight and let you know that the sidewalk has been completed down at the Lanesboro Elementary School. We installed new front entry sidewalks. Condrin Construction did the work, and they did a fantastic job. And I just wanted to say publicly, thank you to the town of Lanesboro for paying for that project. And I think anyone would be impressed. It's a vast improvement. So that's what I really came to say, and I appreciate you giving me the time, Joe, to just address the committee quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where exactly are the sidewalks?
Tim, do you want to speak to where exactly the sidewalks are?
Sure. So if you're standing in front of the school, there's a sidewalk that runs left to right, and that entire sidewalk has been complete. It's about 400 feet long, and that runs all the way across the front of the school. Also, we, we actually had some work where we had to take out the curbing in front of the parking lot, and, and do a nice little slope there so that it'd be accessible. We also did the left-hand walkway going from the parking lot all the way up to the entryway doors, and that was, that was actually excavated down about two feet, because the sidewalk was in really bad shape there. And that was due to the fact that it was placed directly on top of clay. So it didn't have a nice subsurface, so, so we created one, so this one should last a long time. Also, as you get up to that door, there's a sidewalk that goes off to the left, to the playground, and that sidewalk's been completed too. They also patched in and planted some new grass all along the sidewalks too, so they really did a thorough job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tim.
Thank you, gentlemen.
One of the things I truly love about this modern age of telephones, texts, and video is the fact that my colleagues can communicate with me and tell me when I've said something that's, well, stupid. So allow me to correct myself. I get a very bad expression, a very bad description of the remote academy, and I'm going to attempt to correct that now. So the idea, children will be assigned to their regular grade-level teachers, which will be a great way to build community among peers at the grade levels. That's going to happen starting next Wednesday. So it's going to be, as I said, again, very important to build community among the peers at grade levels, and then we will look for ways to continue and do that on the synchronous remote Wednesdays throughout the rest of the year. And we will handle a transition to a remote academy, if one happens, with great care. It's also great when they write your script for you. I'm much better at delivering lines than coming up with them. Have I done this properly now? Thank you very much for allowing me to correct that. Please strike my previous statement from the record.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Christina.
Sure. Sorry. If I were a family that had chosen remote, I'd be a little bit worried right now. So I'm just wondering, I mean, it seems clear that we have more students attending in person than we anticipated. We have fewer teachers, therefore, available to teach in the remote academy. I know last time we talked about this, we did have teachers who had, who were going to be teaching remote anyway. Are we still in that position where we have teachers who are going to be remote and might be available for teaching the remote academy?
I can speak to that during the staffing.
Okay. So, I mean, the bottom line is, we're still doing the remote academy, we're going to figure it out, it's just going to be a little bit harder to pull it off. Okay.
Next up on our agenda is Business Administrator Updates.
Thank you all. All right, first up, the driest agenda item of the night. We have a five-year copier-printer lease agreement that is in your packet from Repeat Business Systems, and this is an, this is an update of a prior set of leases that had been cobbled together. The reason it's before you instead of just, just rolling through is because it is a five-year long-term lease, and it requires your approval. It is a little bit less expensive than what we were seeing previously, coming in at $1,336.89 per month for 60 months. That's for all copiers and printers across this school. So what I would be looking for you to do after any discussion is move to accept the Repeat Business five-year lease with a lease payment of $1,336.89.
So moved.
I'll second.
Carrie moves. Steve seconds. Any further discussion, Steve?
Joe, somewhere, somewhere, someone has crunched the numbers and says it's better to lease than to buy.
Yes.
So we did that.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
I'll take my first question, and my second one is, is there any change in pricing? Are we expecting to use the copiers less this year?
I don't think we were able to make really intelligent guesses there.
I mean, this is a five-year lease, so it's hard to.
Yeah. So the short answer is, we have not adjusted this lease based on a projected possible decrease in number of copies run this year.
Do we expect that there will be a significant decrease in copies? I mean, I know this is such an exciting conversation. Do we expect that there will be a significant decrease, or it's going to be a small decrease, and it's not even worth discussing?
I think, given our move to AARBB here, we're making a transition to more heavy use of Chromebooks, and certainly, there will be more that we'll try to do digitally, but I don't know if we'll see a precipitous drop.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hard I.
Hard I.
Conry I.
July the I.
Green I.
Mila I.
Karen Opa I.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you.
All right, so Staffing and FTE Updates. I'll say upfront that we do not have a vote to put before you tonight. We're still trying to figure out exactly what to do that you could vote on. So as Joelle had mentioned, the survey results, we have less than half the students opting for remote that we had before. And as was discussed, that changes a lot of the math around how we're going to allocate staff, how we can move forward. What I think is equally important to note is that when you're, when we were taking 160 to 180 kids out of our buildings and educating them remotely, and that goes down to 77, we're now placing a much greater strain on our physical capacity and our ability to accommodate physical distancing, staff that, and handle it in a way that is both, both safe and educationally sound. And so planning for that, we are potentially going to be looking up at opening up new sections in a number of different grades and subjects, potentially, to accommodate that increase of students coming into the building in October, and then even more in November. And quite honestly, that, that move to four days in-person in November, that is projected, is something that, that currently has us scrambling to try to figure out how to accommodate what we might see coming in. We do not currently have an ideal solution to it, and so we're going to need a little bit more time to figure out how to, how to staff that. To the topic of teachers who will be teaching remotely, that HR process of trying to figure out what accommodations to make, who will be remote, who will be in-person, is a lengthy process, and the office is still working on trying to work with every staff member to get all of the details in, evaluate them, and understand how to move forward with them. So that's, that's still ongoing as well, which definitely is throwing us for a little bit of a loop in planning as well. So that was the Staffing and FTE Updates. Is there anything you'd like to ask?
I'm going to just test the spike to see if it was fixed, so I just want to say thank you for all the hard work.
All right, anything else? Multipurpose Building Project Updates and Approvals. If all goes well, by the end of next week, we will be moving into the new building. I say if all goes well because we still do have a number of hurdles left to leap over, namely, some. namely, some polishing, some testing, and then the final inspection. So all of that still lies ahead of us. The good news is, we don't currently project any hiccups related to that. And I do not have any approvals that I am requesting here, so there is no vote necessary. I just stuck it on there just in case. Questions? All right. FY21 grant updates. On this one, we're all set with both ESER and the Coronavirus Relief Fund grants. We are beginning to use them judiciously as we know that we've got plenty of potential costs coming up that might go beyond those bounds. And so we're trying to make sure that we tackle it in the most expedient but also cautious way we can combine. That's it.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Next up on our agenda is the nomination of an MASC delegate. And I'm going to turn this over to Carrie to talk to us a little bit more about this.
Okay. I'm just looking for the form. It's in our packet, right?
Yes, it is.
There it is, okay. So every year, there's a joint conference with the MASC, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and MASSS, the Association of School Superintendents. And every year, at that conference, there is a delegates' assembly. And at the assembly, the delegates vote on resolutions that are being brought to the state level by the board, the MASC board. And they vote the slate of officers for the MASC. And we are members of the MASC. We pay dues. And the MASC helps us with charting the course and with our policies and our protocols. And they come out and do workshops. But I don't know that we've ever sent a delegate to the assembly. I mean, I've gone to the conference a bunch of times. I've never gone to the delegates' assembly. I've never really thought about it. Andrea came to us looking for an endorsement as a school committee because she is hoping to be, to run from the floor as president of MASC this year because there were no nominations. There is a nomination for a vice president, and the other officers are covered, but nobody nominated themselves or was nominated by a school committee. So she is looking for the committees who endorsed her, and we're one of five or six, I think, to also send a delegate to support her nomination from the floor. It will not be an in-person conference this year. It will be a remote series of workshops rather than a big conference. But there will still be a delegates' assembly, and it's early November. So I am looking to, hoping to be that delegate, having never done it before. I have been on the resolutions committee of the MASC when I was serving on that board. And I think the MASC does some really good work advocating at the state level. So that's why this is on the agenda.
Great, thank you for volunteering. Yes?
One other thing they've done is they also helped us with the superintendent search recently.
Right.
And so they've also been running a lot of Zoom meetings to discuss school issues. And I've gone to several of them. And they've been extremely helpful conversations to just talk about, you know, the common problems we're all facing and to just, you know, foster discussion that's really needed. It's one of the few good things to come out of the pandemic that it's now easy to actually talk to colleagues across the state. And I was going to say, I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to be the alternate as well. I think this is something we should be more involved in.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to nominate Carrie Green as our MASC delegate.
I will second.
Any further discussion?
Should we also nominate Steve as the alternate while we're at it?
Sure.
Would you accept that as a friendly amendment to your petition?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Carter, aye.
Conry, aye.
July, aye.
Green, aye.
Mila, aye.
Karen, aye.
Great, that motion passes. Okay, next up on our agenda is the school committee meeting calendar. Is that you?
Would you like me to speak to that?
Yes, please.
Okay. You have in your packets the calendar. Let me just make sure I have this here. And this calendar is something that I am recommending that we implement, that you vote on and accept. I think that what we're involved in right now with reopening school in the midst of a pandemic requires a more careful monitoring process than is possible with one meeting a month devoted to a variety of different topics. I believe that a second meeting, a second meeting should be... I think a second meeting should be scheduled. We're having a little technical issue. There we go. Thank you.
Nice sketch, Chris.
I believe that a second meeting should be scheduled that is devoted strictly to the reopening plans and the implementation of those plans and the monitoring of how things are going. I would, of course, ask that the principals and the majority of administrators not be included in the typical meetings like this evening where there's a principals' update because I think it would be much better to focus educational issues to one meeting a month. And this would be a really in-depth dive into what's going on. I would recommend that at these meetings, we'd also have the opportunity to get, collect data and determine data that would be helpful to understand how our implementation is going, which would include parent survey data, perhaps any sort of data that we've got about behavioral measurements of students, how they're actually adhering to the types of things we're doing. Essentially, something to where the school committee is in a position to monitor this reopening in a once-a-month fashion that is not taken up by other typical school committee issues that come up. So basically, what you've got here is a calendar with suggestions. If you notice, they typically have on Thursdays except for November the 24th because I'm sure you don't want to meet on Thanksgiving. So we'd instead meet on the Tuesday, then December 8th, and then December 22nd. Other than that, they would be Thursdays. But I think that, not that we necessarily have to use all of these going through the course of the year, but we could, of course, cancel them in the event that they're not necessary. But it just, as I think about our current status of where we are, and we've been planning as best we can, but given that, we're still not, we're not crystal clear on a lot, many different aspects. And I think it's important for the school committee to monitor what's going on. So again, this is, I propose this calendar. The question is, will you vote to accept these additional meetings?
I would vote to move the calendar. Did you want...
I was going to second after you, then you said a comment.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the calendar as presented.
Okay.
I will second.
Second, further discussion?
So we have some items on this that we might want to change. Like September, we have the superintendent goals.
Right. And that probably needs to be changed.
Right.
And it would make sense to probably not move that until December, right?
Well, maybe November. I mean, I'm fine doing this as a preliminary and just knowing that, just knowing that we're going to be changing that.
Yep.
Given that that's supposed to be then tonight.
Right.
So if we look at this, the September, just as if I might be, September 24th, we would have had essentially a full week of remote. Basically, that would only be a discussion of remote, things that we've learned through the implementation. That could potentially be a short meeting, but the meeting the following month, we'd have a much better sense of where things were. I just wanted to, I'm thinking about this because it's, as much as I truly value the educational subcommittee meetings, but I think also this gives an opportunity for, yeah, for everybody to be involved in this. And as I think about it, the purpose of subcommittees is to do the business that can then bring back recommendations. But this seems to be a truly, the situation we find ourselves in is like no other. And I think that the full committee's focus on the educational aspects of our program would help us to keep you informed of what's going on. But also, this is a public meeting. It keeps the public informed of how things are going and the changes that we're going to make, we're making. Because I don't expect that, I don't expect the plan that we are, what we're doing in December is going to look precisely what it looks like on September 16th. There are going to be changes. And I think that just might as well realize that and keep you apprised of the changes that we recommend and suggest.
I do also appreciate that by pulling out the educational pieces, but keeping it as the committee, we're still hearing the reports from all the administrators, but we're taking less of their time away from when they could be working on the constantly changing pieces of the puzzle.
Thank you for the recognition. They spend all their, they're working right now. And, but I think that it really is, I think if we focused, if we focused the reports from the principals on, at these meetings, we'd be in a much better place. Of course, there could be written updates that you could have.
Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
All in.
Carter, aye.
Conry, aye.
Green, aye.
Mila, aye.
Karen, aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next up on our agenda, our subcommittee reports. And our report tonight is from our policy liaison, Carrie Green.
So we have one policy, which is immunization of students. And I believe this is a revision to an existing policy. Is that correct? Rob? Sorry.
Yes.
This is a revision to an existing policy. Yeah. So it's policy JLCB. And I'll read the policy because it's a short paragraph. And then the addition has to do with the flu vaccination. So immunization of students. And also, it is suggested that we try to waive the second read. And I'll go ahead and approve this this evening. Students entering school for the first time, whether at kindergarten or through transfer from another school district, will be required to present a physician's certificate attesting to immunization against communicable diseases as may be specified from time to time by the Department of Public Health. The only exception to these requirements will be made on receipt of a written statement from a doctor that immunization would not be in the best interest of the child or by the student's parent or guardian, stating that vaccination or immunization is contrary to the religious beliefs of the student or parent/guardian. And then the addition is, note, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has updated the Massachusetts School immunization requirements to include a documented seasonal dose of the influenza vaccine. This requirement will remain in effect until rescinded by the governor. So that's the end of the policy. My understanding is that the requirement for the flu vaccine is that it be gotten by December 31st. So I know that kids going in for physicals now are being offered the flu vaccine. It is available.
It's true in some pediatrician's office, but not others.
Not others.
They're trying to work out, I know just from having recently gone with my kids, that they don't have the flu vaccine yet. And they're trying to figure out how to administrate it to all of the kids that are coming through that it's not required for. So they're trying to work out some of the nuances behind that. Hoping to possibly work with schools in terms of setting things up.
You mean, coming into the schools to do the vaccines?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Clinic-type situations, yeah.
Right. And I also understand that there's no shortage. So the fact that some offices don't have it is not because there's a shortage, as there often is in the flu vaccine. So, yeah. Ellie, Christine?
Me. At our wellness group meeting this past week, our nurse Carol Stein-Pain has been working with our, oh, I don't remember her title off the top of my head, our regional nurse liaison. And they have tentatively scheduled a flu vaccine clinic for students, staff, and community members. And that information will be forthcoming. It will be by appointment. It will be a drive-through clinic. They've done other types of clinics since COVID has happened. So that will be coming. And most insurance covers it. And the only logistical piece is, parents have to hold on to that piece of paper and provide proof to their primary care or pediatrician. So I wanted to...
And is that for Mount Graylock Student District or just West?
That is for anybody in the community. So Lansbury, Mount Graylock, Williamstown, my neighbor who doesn't have kids, anybody who wants to come will be able to do that.
Awesome, thank you. Jamie?
Under the policy, is there a certification requirement for the seasonal flu vaccine? Because as it's drafted, it says students entering the school for the first time need to provide a certification. Is the, I know that the requirement is that all students, unless they fall into one of the exceptions, have to be, have to receive the seasonal flu vaccine. But is there a reporting requirement to the school to demonstrate that they've gotten it?
I believe so. I believe if you have it at your pediatrician's office, they have to then send that report to the school. And if you get it at a clinic, you have to give it to your pediatrician, who then sends it to the school. The school has to be notified by December 31st. I don't know what the consequences are if you don't get it, but...
I may have to look at it right, I'll move the word first right now. So do we need that in the policy? Or will that just happen as a matter of practice between the doctor's office and the...
I think that's more the operational aspect. This is just the policy stating that it's required.
We think there's been a letter circulated that we'll be sending home at some point to parents.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow at last.
About the requirement. And how are you going to maintain the records of who's got it and who hasn't?
Nurse, or nurse, for all immunization.
So basically, it's going to be part of this whole, to your point, the part of the required immunization record is going to be the flu shot.
Okay.
Anecdotally, we were at the pediatrician's office today, and there was a child of who I assume was entering kindergarten. And instead of the usual five vaccines, there were, I mean, there were Band-Aids all over this poor kid because of the number of vaccinations. There were tears. Not my kid, but, you know.
I will say, we went to get our kids vaccinated at Northern Pediatrics, and they were extremely fast and...
So are you okay approving this without a second read since it's a revision to an existing policy?
Yeah.
So moved, yeah. Second.
Turnover, move. Art, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All in.
Carter, aye.
Conry, aye.
July, aye.
Green, aye.
Mila, aye.
Karen, aye.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session with intent to return to open session per MGL chapter 30A, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Magia, all bargaining units, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee and the chair, so declares.
So moved.
I'll second, but then I want to discuss.
Discussion?
So I'm... Just second.
Yeah, no other seconds? Any further discussion?
So I'm strongly opposed to this. I do not feel that discussion in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on either the school committee's bargaining position, but more importantly, on finding what's best for all interested parties, in particular, students, teachers, and families. We're facing entirely new problems with information and understanding constantly changing. When we discuss in private, we deprive ourselves of the wisdom, experience, and suggestions of the community. Since our agreements have been done, many members of the community have come forward with concerns about unintended consequences, some of which we heard about tonight. If these had been aired earlier, we would have had a better plan in place for students and teachers and families. I thus repeat what I have said in the past. We should have all our discussions in public. One option is to have a public discussion first, and then both parties can adjourn to executive session. Having a joint meeting in public allows the community to hear all the views and positions and provide feedback and suggestions.
Any other further discussion?
Yeah. I really feel for Steve. And I want, I want to point because we have had so many meetings because there's so many things with tendencies, changes, and et cetera. And we've had, I think I've gone to more executive session meetings in the last six weeks than I have done in five years. And I say that, now I realize there's something, but I agree with Steve. I think we go into executive session too often. I don't know what, I don't know what specifics this executive session is aiming for. And, and it's hard to take a vote on something when you don't know what we're going to discuss. So I'm kind of relying on people that asking for this executive session because I really feel it's detrimental. But I don't know if it's detrimental or not. I don't know what the exact specific thing we're going to discuss. I kind of lean where Steve is right now. I think that, I don't think, I don't think opening discussions is necessarily detrimental. And sometimes I think it really pays us off when people realize when we have discussions and why we have long executive session meetings because they're complex. They just think we run in air and don't, but I kind of agree with Steve. And I'm really torn about it because I don't know. Can I ask who requested the executive, how does that happen? Who says we should go on executive session on that? Who makes that decision?
So an executive session item like this, where we're strategizing prior to entering into collective bargaining with the union, is a chance for us to talk and to prepare ourselves to try to understand what our stance will be when we do walk into negotiations. If we do that in public, we do compromise our ability to know what a general consensus of the committee is and to present stances that are, that are representing the committee during negotiations. Now, in terms of whether or not we can do things in public, the only way that we can negotiate with the union in public is if both sides were to want to negotiate in open, and that's the only way that could happen, just to clarify.
Thank you. Regina, did you have a comment?
Actually, I was just going to say what Joe said about both sides have to agree that it can be done in public if either side requests that the negotiating position be discussed in executive session. And it's always been told to us by legal counsel that we don't really have an option. We have to have the conversation in executive session when it's a negotiating matter with them.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Steve?
Yeah, I'll say the reason I brought this up is because I think, as Al was saying, I think we're going into executive session too often. And that maybe we could start by having some meetings with the union in public and then both sides adjourn to executive session. This way, the public would have a much better sense of what is being discussed and when and why, have a much better sense of the issues. And it would also give people a chance to provide feedback. There are some things, you know, as we just saw today, that are taking us by surprise. Whereas if we had discussed them in public, we might have had the advantage of other people's perspectives.
I don't want to flag, but I'm going to vote yes on this. But I appreciate Joe clarifying it. And I understand the concept of negotiations being, I understand that concept. Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carter aye.
Conry aye.
Delago aye.
Green aye.
Mila no.
Turnover aye.
Okay, that motion passes. It is 7:58 and we are moving into executive session.
Welcome back to open session. The next agenda item was discussion of stipends, but it has to be negotiated, so we do not have anything there. I do not have any further business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, moved!
I think I heard Jamie move first, you second, Al second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Harder eye.
I was going to say further discussion.
I did say.
Blue eye.
Green eye.
Was there a chance for further discussion on that?
There was.
I called for discussion. But I said I wanted to say something.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Can I just say something briefly?
Sure.
I will just reiterate that I think it is a mistake when we do not have discussions in public. Miller, no.
A turnover, aye.
Okay, it is 9:57 and this meeting is adjourned.